Order on Monday, August the 28th at 7:00 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members CO, Dylan, Girbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, and Mayor Protam Tihar. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, wastewater superintendent Skull, Superintendent Engineer Rubel, as well as a few other staff members. And we invite, excuse me, those members of the public who are present this evening to sign in the back to my left. You do have some supplemental material in front of you which will be discussed during Warren and Rogers' portion of the presentation this evening. And of course, you do have an agenda in front of you, so at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. Moved by Dylan, seconded by Girbaugh to approve the agenda as submitted. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come now to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. This comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please, and if you would come to the podium, Mrs. Roth, we would appreciate that.
Is this working?
If the green light is on at the base, it should be.
Is it working now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I am Joan Roth of 1-860-Wood Court, Crestwood subdivision, and I'm not going to read this to you. This is my personal account since the eighties of the odor problem, but anybody who's interested to have a look at it, that's fine. Mayor Marl, Mr. Campbell, members of Celine City Council, I've had an opportunity to go through the report that Webster Environmental has put together, and some of my comments reflect my interpretation of what I understand. So I may be a little bit ahead of the game here, but I wanted to share my thoughts. Our home is 150 feet away from the Celine wastewater treatment plant. My husband has lived at this address since 1972, and I since 1979. Odors have been present all these years, from intermittent to daily. For the past three years, the stench has been daily varying in intensity. It now permeates our home with the windows closed. Webster Environmental Associates have now finalized their report and given a preferential solution that would eliminate 99 percent of the stench. The report clearly confirms the multiple sources of odors, identifies failing and old equipment, in addition to noting several operational problems, including open hatches, multiple leaks, inadequate or insufficient grit channel covers, absence of chemicals, inoperational ventilation fan, just to name a few. As a citizen of Celine who pays high taxes for a 1,000-square-foot home, in addition to increased water and sewer bills, I request the solution be acted upon now. Borrow the money, contract with a company that has the expertise to implement the solution, and hold them accountable for the work. I want to be proud of the town I love. Let's get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Roth. We appreciate your comments. Additional citizen comments?
I'm the one that my wife mentioned, lives 150 feet from the sewage plant itself. Many occasions, I have addressed this problem. It never seemed to be too concerning. Actions were taken, but never definitely completed in detail. I've said my piece, but I just want to say one comment. I dearly love the city of Celine, but it stinks.
Mr. Roth, are there additional citizen comments? One last opportunity, any additional citizen comments? No? Okay, well, let me begin, and then I'm going to turn it over to our guests. First, I want to thank those members of the community who chose to attend tonight's meeting. We especially appreciate the comments made by Mr. and Mrs. Roth on this important quality of life issue. Additionally, I want to acknowledge all the residents and business owners who have either contacted myself, another member of council, or city staff to ask questions or raise concerns about our wastewater treatment plant. Finally, and I know I've extended this invitation in the past, but I would welcome the opportunity to sit down with any citizen who wishes to discuss this matter further. All they need to do is call or email my office, and we would be happy to set something up. Want to introduce our guests this evening. In addition to city staff, we have Mr. Jim Ross from Webster Environmental Associates, Mr. Brian Rubel from Tetra Tech, Mr. Warren Kramer, our financial advisor, and Mr. Roger Swetz, our bond counsel from Dickinson Wright. Gentlemen, we appreciate your attendance this evening, and we look forward to a thoughtful and robust discussion on odor abatement in the city of Celine. Now, some of this will be redundant, but I believe it's worth repeating. Pungent and infrequent odors have been an issue in this community for a number of decades. However, as I've stated previously, the frequency and severity of odors permeating from our wastewater treatment plant of late are unacceptable and have an adverse impact on our citizens' quality of life. The current situation will not be tolerated. As such, we will meet as long as necessary this evening to develop consensus so we can move forward expeditiously to resolve this longstanding problem in our community. City Council's decision to engage Webster Environmental Associates, a company with a sterling reputation and decades of experience evaluating wastewater treatment plants across North America, was a sound strategic decision. It also acknowledges that there is no silver bullet or quick fix to this problem. If there were, it would have been discovered decades ago. The work that is done in our wastewater treatment plant is highly complex and scientific, and resolving deficiencies requires extreme vetting and analysis. Accordingly, tonight's presentation will reveal how critically important it was to allow Webster Environmental Associates the ability to conduct two separate odor studies at our plant. The data collected will prove invaluable and help us implement upgrades at the plant that will successfully contain and mitigate odors. I deeply regret that this approach took several months, but as I've articulated in the past, the best solutions are data-driven, and it often takes some time to collect and scrutinize the data. It's also worth mentioning that in government and in policymaking, it's imperative that we maintain fidelity with established procedures and approaches, stay in the course regardless of inherent hardships or inconvenience, because this manner of doing business almost always produces the best results. In summation, I apologize again for recent odors that have affected this community. I also regret that in the past, the city often overpromised and underdelivered as it related to controlling offensive odors. However, more importantly, I'm optimistic that tonight, we will take additional steps in our ongoing efforts to successfully resolve this issue, and rest assured that the city will continue to seek short-term solutions that will move us, and will move fast, excuse me, as we are able to construct and implement permanent fixes to remedy this matter of critical importance. Again, I look forward to the presentation, Q and A, and a discussion with my council colleagues. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rubel and Mr. Ross. Please be sure to speak into the microphone, because we are recording tonight's meeting. Take as much time as you would like, gentlemen, then we'll work our way around the table, addressing questions and concerns that council members will have. Then we'll jump to Warren and Roger, so those gentlemen can talk about what our financial strategies and options are moving forward. Again, we'll address questions and concerns, and then hopefully, at that point, begin to develop consensus. Is that clear, gentlemen?
Understood. Can I speak from that microphone?
Absolutely. Just make sure the green light is on at the base of the microphone.
Okay, I think we're good. Okay, as was said, my name is Jim Ross, and I'm with Webster Environmental, and tonight, I'm here to present the final report, or at least an overview of the final report. That includes the round one and the round two testing. We just have to get technology to work, though. There we go. So so far, the tests that have been completed, we did a round one testing, and that was done in December of 2016, I'm sorry. And that testing was done to represent the cool weather conditions, and also, it was a little bit on the wet side as well. We also, just, we did the round two sampling that was done in July of this year. The purpose of that sampling was to collect data on conditions where the conditions were warmer and drier. Those results have been analyzed, the dispersion modeling has been done. We developed six alternatives that we evaluated for effectiveness and cost. We've produced conclusions or recommendations. The odor complaint investigation part of this project is complete, and the final report has been submitted. So I know many of you were here for the last presentation, and so this is a little bit of a repeat of that, but just if you weren't here, what we do in an odor study is we collect data. And that data comes from the air sampling and the liquid sampling that we do. Just as a general overview, the air testing that we do, we collect hydrogen sulfide measurements, reduced sulfur compound analysis, and odor panel testing. And all of that gives us a picture of what's out there, how strong the odors are, how far out the odors can go, and then what technologies would be most effective to be able to reduce those odors. We also tested the wastewater in various processes. The airflow was tested in different locations where there's foul air being pulled from processes. Each of the odor scrubbers were performance-tested, and we also did very similar testing at the southside pump station. So the big story tonight, really, is that round two was really critical to do. And I just wanted to show this up here. Round one and two, H2S concentration. H2S, just the abbreviation for hydrogen sulfide. Hydrogen sulfide is just an indicator compound of odor. So you would expect the higher the hydrogen sulfide, the higher the odor concentration. So if we look at, if we look here at the peak concentrations, this was round one, and these were the highest concentrations that we measured in these particular processes. There was more processes than this, but just for these particular processes. So for example, the headworks, this first line here, and that's just where the wastewater first comes into the process. It hasn't done anything biologically yet, but when the wastewater first comes in, the peak hydrogen sulfide was one part per million in the round one. Round two, that same location, went up about almost 10 times, much higher than we anticipated it going up. The next one was the west PC, the west primary clarifier. That's just another step of the process there at the plant, I won't get into that, but the peak there we measured in the round one was 14 parts per million, the peak in round two, 71 parts per million. Septage-receiving facility, that was a facility that was not operational when we did our round one testing, so we could not do any testing on it. It was operational when we did the testing this time. The septage-receiving facility was found to have peaks of hydrogen sulfide of 62 parts per million, which is moderate to high. That means that it does produce odor, but those peaks, we found, were only happening when the trucks were actually unloading septicage. So that period of time is about 20 minutes. So for 20 minutes, depending on what's in that truck, this is a worst-case scenario, not all trucks were like this. Some trucks unloaded their liquid, and it didn't produce very much at all. Other trucks produced a lot. So it really depends on what the truck was offloading. But nonetheless, what we did find is there were times, periods of the day, where that did produce odor. The tank where that liquid initially goes also was a source of odor to be found. There's a small area of the primary digester, it's really not very significant in how, the amount of gas that it emits, but it is something we will need to deal with. And then another one was the secondary digester. The peak we saw was 22 originally, it was 93 in the second round of testing. And as we go along, I'll show you why it was so important to have this information when it comes to actually selecting the right technology. Similarly, these were the odor panel results, and not to get too far into what exactly this number means, but the higher the number, the higher the strength of an odor. So that D to T unit is just a unit of odor strength. So again, just to highlight a couple of these, here was the east primary clarified. During round one, it was 2,500 D to T, round two, 43,000. Secondary digester, round one, 7,500, round two, 25,000. This next one was a very interesting one, because the sludge-holding tank, rectangular, I say there, it's a rectangular tank that's at the lower end of the plant. When we first did the first round of testing, that we took a sample from that tank, it was 310. The second round was greater than 60,000, which means it exceeded the laboratory evaluation threshold. And what that means is just that, when we were there the first time, there was an activity at the plant that we did not catch, and this time, we did, meaning that there was some other process going on that where that tank actually was emitting lots of odors during the second round of testing, and it wasn't during the first. So it was really critical that we got that, because according to that number, it doesn't need any odor control. According to this number, it needs odor control. So that has now been included in the revised odor control system. So I understand that from where you're sitting, you won't be able to read this text, but the colors you can see, and I'll just describe what I'm showing here. We've got two pie charts. On the left is the odor emission rates from the various processes at the plant when a truck is unloading septicage. So this is a 20-minute period, a worst-case condition when a truck is unloading septicage. This blue part of the pie there, that's the portion of odor from the entire plant that's coming just from the septicage-receiving building when that truck is unloading septicage. Then the next one, the next biggest one, this is the headworks building. This is where the flow first comes into the plant. Then one of the chemical scrubbers, the do-all scrubber that wasn't performing well, and these rest are channels and splitter boxes that are just, they need to be sealed better and more air pulled from them to capture. The pie chart on the right is odor emission rates, very, obviously, the same plant, but now the truck has gone, they're not unloading septicage anymore. So now, it's the same processes, and you can see now, the septicage is gone, the headworks building is the vast majority of the odor, then the scrubber, then those same channels that we're talking about. You can see the rest of them make up a much smaller portion. Still have to grab most of those, though, because those much smaller portions, even if you take care of all of that, still can cause you problems off-site. We've talked about this before, but this is one of the chemical scrubbers, the do-all scrubber. The story on the do-all scrubber is an old scrubber. So it's over 20 years old, it's not in good condition, and the actual, we did a performance test on it, and you know, when they're new and performing well, it should be 99 percent removal of hydrogen sulfide, we found it was less than 20. And that's why it's such a significant source of odor. The other scrubber that's there, the ERA Tech scrubber, actually was found to be performing very well, 99 percent, like design. The problem, though, is that, there's two problems. One is that it's 17 years old, it's a chemical scrubber, it's leaking, the manufacturer is no longer in business, it's not dependable, is the deal. And in addition to that, currently, the city is spending $77,000 a year on chemicals to run these systems, which is not the O and M cost that you want to be putting out. We did modeling to, atmospheric modeling, to predict what are the offsite impacts of the actual treatment plant, and these are, again, I do want to say, this is worst-case scenarios. This is the worst-case meteorological conditions, this is when a septicage truck is unloading for that 20-minute period, you know, so what we're trying to show is, what could it be on a bad day, is what we're trying to show. And in that situation, that number 3,000 is something that you're going to detect, is something you're going to smell, which has already been well documented. The other thing is the frequency, and again, this is overly predicting this, but that it's the number of times where you could detect any kind of an odor coming from the plant. It could be a very mild, just a whiff, to something that's very pungent to you. And again, it's predicting that there is very frequent events that could be. So we put together, what do we need to do to fix the problem? We've got to capture and treat about 22,000 cubic feet a minute of air, of foul air. We've got to capture that, treat it, then release it to the atmosphere. Judging, we calculated, what do we think, based on the testing that we've done, we're going to see coming into this system, meaning what is our design parameters? And again, I know I don't want to bore everybody with all this stuff, but we came up with the design parameters of what the system would need to treat. We want to make sure that it's treating 99 percent of whatever's coming into it, and on a much smaller scale, the same thing at the southside lift station. We, 600 CFM of total air, and we developed the conditions of what we believe will be coming into that system, and we need to design a system that will remove 99 percent of So now that we have our design parameters, we came up with six alternatives to evaluate. Four of them are included in the, were included in the round one testing. Five and six are new, because the data showed different results. So I'll go through these in a very general sense, because the first four are just four different technologies that we evaluated to see which one would be most effective, which one could handle these loadings, and then secondly, what is the most cost-effective of those options. So chemical scrubbing is just the use of chemicals to come into contact with that hydrogen sulfide and the odorous air, and use chemicals to oxidize your air. That's what you have now. The second option we looked at was carbon adsorption. You pass air over carbon or some other dry media, and the hydrogen sulfide and other compounds will actually absorb to the media. It kind of sticks to it. And there is some other processes as well, but we'll leave it at that for tonight. The third one is a biological option, and there's, three and four are similar. I think some of you actually have gone out and seen a biofilter. It's just a large concrete box with media in it, and you're growing microbes, and they're the ones that are oxidizing those compounds for you. They're oxidizing them into carbon dioxide, water, and some sulfuric acid that gets washed out the drain and back to the process. Three is organic media, meaning it has more of a woodchip-based media, if you were to look at, looks like woodchips. The fourth one is inorganic media, that is, it's an engineered media. The only benefit of it is that it can last for 15 years, you don't have to touch it typically. Organic media, you have to replace maybe every three years. The fifth option, and the sixth option, came about from the idea of, well, what if we were to separate the air streams and have two different technologies? Can we get a better system that way? And the answer was yes. And so we took a portion of the airflow that was very low in hydrogen sulfide, there was at least one process with a lot of airflow, the rotating biological contactors, that were low in hydrogen sulfide both rounds. So we took that airflow and said, let's put that into carbon, because that carbon will last a long time. Then take the rest of it and put it into a biological system. So alternative five was carbon for one airflow and an inorganic media biofilter for the other, for the rest of the airflow. And then alternative six was carbon for that same airflow, but instead of a biofilter, a bioscrubber. And I have a picture of a bioscrubber in just a second here, but a bioscrubber works the same way as a biological system, works exactly like a biofilter. The only difference is the media is lighter, and so it can be contained in a cylindrical vessel with a stack on top, and looks very much exactly like a carbon vessel would, if you've ever seen a carbon vessel. All of those, I'm just talking about, at the wastewater treatment plant, they all, all these options, we assume that we're going to have a carbon system at the southside pump station to treat that air. Okay, another slide that I know you can't read, but it is in the report, if you'd like to get into the nitty-gritty of this, but this is why it was so important to do two rounds of testing. On the bottom, we did a total present worth analysis for a 20-year lifecycle cost for each of the alternatives that we looked at. So alternative one, chemical scrubber, two, carbon absorber, and down the line to alternative six. Alternative one, that 20-year net total present worth came out to be 5.7 million. Second one, 4.6 million. Third one, 4.3. Fourth one, 4.5. Fifth one, 4.4, and now we get down to six, and we get a good drop-off, 3.99, call it 4 million. And the reason why that alternative six really turns out to be a really nice alternative is that the carbon will last a long time treating the air with the low compounds and the low concentrations, and the bioscrubber, you don't have to replace the media. The media typically lasts the whole life of the bioscrubber. It's a different kind of media, and we don't see them get replaced. They just keep working. So because of that, it gives you a really nice option there, that your O and M costs begin to really drop with that. So here, based on that evaluation, that is our recommendation, is to do this, do odor control alternative six. The left there is a picture of a carbon system that would be to treat the airflows with the lower H2S, and then just next to it is a picture of a bioscrubber. And to give you an idea of size, the bioscrubber would be maybe somewhere like a 12-foot diameter, 30 feet tall, something like that. The carbon system would be maybe a nine or 10-foot diameter, 20-something feet tall. We modeled, we connected those, in the model, we connected those airflows into these systems and remodeled it, and this is the model output. The peak odor strengths go down to, that says a 1 up there. The frequency is, it doesn't predict any detectable odors. Now, I do want to say this as a caveat, that doesn't mean that the treatment plant will never, ever smell again. That's not what it means. It just means that it will treat it to the effective point where the air, coming into there and going out of that stack, will produce that. But there are times where that treatment plant, there will be a pump that goes down, a truck that comes in and out, you know, some system that, something happens that's out of the control of these systems, and there could be an odor in the future. And I always say that because it's important, that's the reality of it. But at the end of the day, you're getting a 99 percent removal of those odors. I don't know where they're going to go yet, but potentially, what could be, is, so this is the plant, and potentially, the carbon system could go over here, potentially, the bioscrubber could go here, right on top of one of these existing trickling filters that are abandoned, and in general, the air kind of from here would go there, and the air from here would go there. There's going to be some details of that, but in general, that could be one way to do it. I think there was something else I wanted to say on that, but slipped in my mind right now. There's things that we need to figure out during design, for sure, because we want to make sure that your odor control stays online as much as it possibly can while new construction occurs. That's to be figured out. Potential schedule, design of four months, which I know everybody wants this done today, yesterday, I do understand that. A design of four months is incredibly aggressive. There's permitting that needs to occur, that's going to take us a couple more months to get all that squared away. There is a required advertisement period, and there is a 12-month construction period. We will do everything that we can, if we were to do this design work and whatnot, to try to get all of this as quick as we can, but at this point, this is what I would anticipate all of it to be. Thank you.
Excellent, very good. That was informative, but also well-organized and succinct. Before I open it up for questions, Mr. Brian Rubel, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time? And please be sure to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, this is, this, again, was Jim's report, so Tetra Tech was an author of the report. We're grateful that Jim asked us to help with some of the fieldwork. The council did ask me to prepare a project plan for SRF. You may have been updated on that, but just to review that briefly, about 10 days ago, you received your ranking. You were very highly ranked in the fundable range, you're quite a, you're, you know, there's several communities below you that would fall off the list first if that would occur. So you certainly are fundable, we're very glad about that. So you, you certainly are fundable, we're very glad about that. Something I'm personally glad about is we fought quite hard for Celine to get principal forgiveness, which is sort of a grant. You forgive a portion of the principal of the loan. I did not think this project lent itself to that, but I was very pleased that the state did come up with $50,000 to give you. It's a small part of almost a $3 million price tag, but it, it's certainly something, and very glad to see that. So, that would be my update. I'm sure you will hear more from these professionals about the funding and where to go with the SRF ranking, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Before we open it up for questions, Mr. Skoll, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
I think the report was very thorough, and I think this is the right course of action, and I'm glad we waited for the second round of sampling, because that was really determined which direction we went. We could have went quicker and picked a system that'd be much more expensive to run and less efficient.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. All right, Mayor Potem Tahr, can I start with you? So, questions for either our guests from Webster Environmental, Tetra Tech, or city staff, if you please exhaust the number of questions that you have, and then we'll transition to Mr. Seo, then Councilwoman Dillon, and of course, and to my left, with Councilwoman Mitchell.
Okay, thank you. So, I have some, the overview presentation was very helpful, thank you. So, when looking at the, at the operating cost figures, do they take into account, if there are any, differing personnel costs, not for maintenance, but for simply operating the system? And so, in general, are those included? And are there pros and cons operationally of having two different kinds of system working, systems working, as in option six, versus having everything go through one kind of system, as in option two?
Right.
Jim, you'll make sure to hold the microphone. I'll mic off.
So, yes, there, in those costs, there's an assumption of, of a labor rate, I don't exactly, can't remember exactly what labor rate I used, but there is, there is an assumption of, of cost of that, as, as far as just going, I think it was two hours per, per week, per system, to do some kind of maintenance on it. But typically, they're not going to require very much maintenance at all in that. But the, the question I think you're getting to is, would it be, is it better to have one system rather than two? And the answer is yes. You, you know, you would get the benefit of, of having, you know, the, the thing that you're really maintaining more than anything is the fan in these systems, and so you would have one bigger fan rather than two smaller fans, but in the analysis that we're looking at, I don't think that would be of substantial impact.
Okay. Could, I, thank you. So, another question I had is, can you talk about, you touched on this a little bit, the life expectancy of the system? One of the issues that's clear from the report is that we have two systems right now that are at the end of, or nearing the end of their useful life. So, what is the useful life of the systems we're looking at here, and do they outlast the funding parameters? Or loan payoffs and so on?
Well, the, the life expectancy of that system, which is, which is really, with the carbon, it's just a vessel, and then there's media that's inside that. In that carbon system, it's assumed, that cost assumes that it's going to be, that media's going to be changed every five years. So that keeps that going. And that vessel will last 20 years or longer. So there's, so that's that. And then the same thing with the bioscrubber, the, the media itself, although is guaranteed typically by the vendor, now they're guaranteeing it for 15 years, we don't see them being changed out. They typically will last for the 20-year life of that system.
So, if I can follow up on that? So, if you have to change that out, does that mean the entire system is replaced, or is it still?
No, it would be-
The vessel remains-
Right, the vessel would remain.
And is still useful, and hasn't deteriorated substantially, so it's not, it's not completely done?
Right, that's correct. Right, if you, if for some reason something went wrong, and you had to replace that media, then that would be the cost of, it has a top on it, that it would take it off, the media could be pulled out, and there's, there's, you know, independent contractors that would come and do that. But yeah, the system itself would stay, would stay just like it is.
Okay. So my, my underlying question really is, will the system outlast our need to pay for it?
I don't know how long you're paying for it, so.
Well, okay.
You're, you know, how long you pay for it is going to be somewhat up to the, to the city council. I think you're, you're kind of generally looking at a, at a 20-year bond issue here. The SRF would technically could be up to about 22. You could cut that back if you wanted to, so they do seem to be roughly compatible.
This, well, this is kind of a detailed question. So, in, in the analysis, there are, in, each of the, each of the, in the descriptions of the alternatives, each of those includes some of the same items, which, and one of those is installed ductwork. And in, in another area of the report, there's mention of ductwork that would have to be included here, ductwork would need to be used for this, and this, are all of the, all of the ductwork needs covered in the, in the project plan as you've, or in the, in the solution that you've described? Or could we have, could we be facing down the road, oh, well, we need to add some ductwork, we need to add some more ductwork at additional work and cost?
Oh, no. So the ductwork that's in the, in that report, the, the cost for it would, would cover all the ductwork, and pull the air from all the different sources that we're talking about into both of these systems, and all the supports and everything needed?
Okay.
Is that your question?
Yep, that's it. Thanks. I'll stop for now, thanks.
Good, okay. Councilmember Seo?
The table on page 38. That's for a 20-year operation?
Right.
Okay, with the current system, we've exhausted the useful life of the chemical scrubber. As a matter of fact, that's no longer manufactured, or that company is no longer in business, right?
Right.
If we buy the carbon scrubber and the other scrubber, and operate the two systems, I assume the carbon scrubber is pretty universally repairable, or replaceable, the media and so on.
Right.
If the company who manufactures it goes out of business, we can still buy the media, I would assume.
That's correct. Yeah, the media is a commodity, yeah.
What about with the other scrubber?
Right. Well, it's the same thing, the, the, there are certain companies that use a media that is a commodity, and there are certains that have a proprietary media. When we vet who we allow into that specification, the only thing I can tell you is that it's people, vendors that are, have been around for a long time, and we don't see them going anywhere. But to more clearly answer your question, if they did go somewhere, then you could always take their proprietary media out and replace it with a commodity media, because the vessel would still work the same. They just would like to say that their media works better because of X, Y, and Z, and, and they're right in some cases. But you could still replace it with, with a media that's, that's widely available, and restart the system, and use that vessel, and all of that.
Okay. Because it seems in Celine, some of our other fairly large projects, we have seen the manufacturer or the person responsible for the thing go out of business.
Right.
I don't know whether it's because they've dealt with the city of Celine-
Bad luck.
Or what's brought that about? But at any rate, we have seen that occur on a number of occasions. And I wouldn't want to see us invest in this, six, seven years down the road, all of a sudden, find out that, oh, that company's no longer in business, or that company's been bought by XYZ company, and now in order to update or continue to operate that, you have to buy new whatever.
Right, whole new system, right.
Just to make the thing work.
Yeah, no, and it's a good question. And, and no, it, these systems, you could, you could replace that media with, with one that would be available, because there will always be somebody making these type of systems.
Okay.
And so the media would always be available, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Seo. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. When testing was done, the first round versus the second round, were the exact same processes in place? Were the same things happening at the facility? So, what skewed your numbers so much, then? Is it weather?
Right. So, the wastewater temperature increased, I think, 10 degrees, if I remember correctly. And we knew that was going to happen, but we did not anticipate the hydrogen sulfide going up so high. So why it did that, we don't know. I wish I had an answer for you, but this is, we have seen this happen in two communities now, where we've done two rounds of testing, the second one came back way higher than we thought. There's, there's predictive equations for what it should go to, and sometimes they don't, they don't go with those at all. They, you know, when the temperature goes up by 10 degrees, you're, it should only double. That's not what happened. It went up 10 times, or even higher in some locations. Now, to further answer your question, though, there were some processes that were different. So the, the testing that we, we did at the sledge holding tank, the rectangular sledge holding tank, there was a particular process happening at the, at the facility during that day that was not happening when we were doing the testing the first round. So that was different, and that caused us to see, wow, we've got, we've got a problem here that we need to address. Do you want to find out what that, exactly what that was?
Well, I guess what I'm just trying to figure out is, is there an underlying problem? Is there some sort of an event that's happening that's causing these bursts?
Right. Well, I can tell you that, I, I would say that if we only saw hydrogen sulfide spiking in certain processes that are controlled within the plant, but what we saw is a hydrogen sulfide spiking as it was just coming into the plant. So, I don't, I'm not looking at that and thinking that that's a process problem, that's just, it's coming in from the collection system much higher than it was before. And like I said, I don't know exactly why. One, one thing it could be is that there was, there, it was a bit wet before we did the testing last time, and maybe that affected the collection system more than we thought. Usually that dries out within a day or two, and we were there, and we had instruments in there for a week, but maybe it rained again and we didn't know, or something like that. I, I wish I had a more clear answer to give to you, but-
Okay, so then it couldn't be that there was a chemicals, chemical dump into the system, or something like that?
No, usually that causes something, usually-
It would cause other numbers to be skewed?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not what we saw.
Okay. I'm trying to look back at my notes off of the presentation. You keep referring to 99%.
Yes.
It's 99% of what?
Oh, of-
Of the acceptable level, I mean, 99% of-
Of hydrogen sulfide.
Right.
So-
Of all of it.
Right, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So whatever's coming in, so they literally, when they install these and they start them up, and they have to let the biological systems acclimatize for a few weeks, but once that's done, they'll have a third party come in and actually do performance testing, and they will do just like what we did. They will test what's coming in, and they will test what's going out. And that manufacturer has to guarantee that that, that piece of equipment is going to remove 99% of, of what the concentration was at point A to point B. And that's, that's how that works.
Okay.
Yeah.
These new systems, the carbon and the bioscrubber, they're standalone buildings. They're not going to be housed, they will be out in the elements?
That's right, yeah.
So what is the noise factor to these buildings?
Right.
And these operations?
Right. So it's just, it's just each one have a, a vessel and a fan, and that fan can have a acoustical enclosure over it. And really, with the distance of where these are to the fence line, you prob, the fan probably wouldn't even be heard there, but, but if, if it is a concern, certainly, often, an acoustical enclosure is placed over that fan, and, and you don't, you don't hear the fan. And that's the only, that's the only thing that you're going to hear would be the, it's the only moving part. Otherwise, it's just the air going through the vessel.
Right.
You don't hear that, and coming out the stack, and the stack, we, we designed that velocity to stay below 2,500 feet per minute, which keeps, keeps you from whistling and all of that.
Okay. I just want to stay on that, but I want to ask either Mr. Rubel or Mr.- Do you remember when we went to Grand Rapids, and there was the one that was outside of the big door, not the big tank? That was like, cha-chung, cha-ching, cha-ching, and the guy said, oh, there's a part that's broken on it?
Yeah, it was, it was a bearing on the fan.
Okay.
That was failing.
Yeah.
So, if it had been enclosed, that fan had been enclosed-
That was my question, was that an enclosed?
It was not.
It was not? Okay, that's why we could-
They were thousands of feet away from their neighbors, so they didn't invest in an enclosure.
Okay, because yeah, that's the other thing, was that a lot of these other facilities were not really in neighborhoods, at least, especially with Grand Rapids.
I think, I think, I think you should have an enclosure to the fan.
Okay.
To muffle that sound, absolutely.
Okay.
And that estimate does, does assume an enclosure for each of those fans.
Okay.
And, and to rest assured, we just had an installation up near Philadelphia, big system, and they, literally, the fan is on the fence line, neighboring the property, and, and it has a sound enclosure, and you just can't hear it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good, because that was quite loud. I wanted to just go back and double, back onto you, when you collected data off-site, that was just a smell test by the person that went out there? I smell this, I don't smell this, and you would rate it, it was not, there was no gauge issues or anything?
Right, that's, that's correct, yeah. You're talking about the odor, the odor complaint investigation?
Right.
Right, that's correct. So Tetra Tech had someone go out in the field and respond to an odor complaint, go and meet with that person, and, and record what they were stating about the problem, the intensity of the smell, and then made their own observations as well.
Right.
And that included wind direction, intensity, time of day, that.
Because there definitely seemed to be a little discrepancy between what they were smelling and what the homeowners were smelling.
Sure, absolutely. And that's, that's pretty common for a number of reasons. But I did want to say something about the odor complaint investigation quickly, is that what, that was very valuable, because, two things. One is, we went back and looked at the times that the complaints came in, and went through, talking with plant staff to find out if there was any things at their processes they were doing during those times that would have caused that. Many of the complaints were happening during times where plant staff wasn't, weren't even there to do something. So we, we never found a correlation between any specific activity and an odor complaint. And the other thing that was valuable was that all of the complaints were on the east side of the plant, southeast, east, and northeast, which is the prevailing winds, and, which also really attributes that, it's another sign that, yes, that plant is causing those problems.
Right. So I guess the other things I wanted to ask was, so in the meantime, we're looking at an April 18 timeframe. What's going to be done between now and April 18? Is there something that can be done? Is there some sort of immediate fix that can be done?
I'll let Bob talk about what they're doing at the plant there.
We continue to struggle with that. We've rebuilt the scrubber. We're adding hydrogen peroxide to boost the oxygen level in the primary tanks. We're experimenting with what we have, what we have available in the remaining life in the scrubbers, but I don't know of anything else we can do. We're investigating putting a mister around the digester to keep that digester odor between the floating cover and the wall. There's a, a space of about six inches that's very close to the fence line. We're looking at trying to eliminate that as a possible source, but everything we're doing is just temporary until we can get something more permanent done.
That's disheartening, that there's nothing more we can do for another year and a half. I, I know, I understand that there isn't. So, are the scrubbers on or are they off? Because I know we shut them off for a while, we thought things got better, and then turned them back on.
Currently, we're experimenting with both. We, the air tech's always up and running, there's always chemical going to it, it's working fine. The do-all, which is the one we recently rebuilt, we've turned it back on, it's been running constantly. We're trying to correlate that between running it and not running it, and seeing where it's worse. And currently, it appears to be worse when it's on than when it's not on. And I feel what's happening is the scrubber's not working effectively, which the tests prove. So we're taking that foul air, we're drawing it off the tanks, shooting it up into the, up into the air to come down on the neighborhoods. So right now, we're going to look at, we rebuilt the media, we're going to look at the nozzles, we're just, we're grasping at straws, but we're trying to do something. We're going to look at the, replacing the, the nozzles that dispersed the chemical over the media, as well as recirculation pump, which is running. But again, we're looking at anything we can possibly do.
Okay. Now, I'm going to switch over now to ductwork. Is that above ground or underground ductwork?
Above ground.
Are we going to have concerns with where we've got gaps- Are we going to have concerns with where we've got gaps between joints or things like that? Because I know that was, that's a, that's a problem we have now, where we've put mats everywhere trying to cover up gaps and things. I mean, you're talking about a pretty long distance from one side of that plant to the other to run duct work.
Right.
I mean, what's the potential for weeks coming out of that duct work before it even gets to where it needs to go?
Right, that's a good question. It, they're, it's going to be under a vacuum, because the fan will be up next to the system, so it, it will be pulling all that air. So the nice thing is, is that even if you were to, to have a leak in your duct work, it's just going to pull in air, it won't, it won't, it won't let air go out. So as far, when I'm saying duct work, I'm just talking about just above-ground pipe to convey the air.
Right.
Is that what you're, is that what you're talking about?
Right, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so if, if, it's a nice thing about having the fan up next to the system is that you keep everything under negative pressure, so even if you have a hole in it, which I've seen many times, for whatever reason, it, it just pulls in air, so it, it doesn't push the air out.
Okay. And then I'll ask just one last question, because I want to get, make sure everybody gets a chance, I'm sorry. Does this have any room for expansion? Meaning, is, if we increase capacity at the plant, is this going to, you know, is this still going to work? Or are we going to have to increase the size of these?
Right. Well, I can answer that in twofold. If your, if your, if your flow comes in, and you're getting more flow, or your loadings are, are higher, so you've got hydrogen sulfide that just gets higher and higher, the bio scrubber, which is what will be serving that area of the plant, can handle much higher, higher loads than what you're seeing today. So that, that's the nice thing about that. But if you're talking about adding a whole nother large tank that needs to be covered and have a whole nother, you know, significant amount of air that needs to be pulled off, then that's a different question. And that would have to be, I think, I guess I would answer it this way. If you knew that was going to happen, then I would recommend designing the system to be able to handle all of that too, if you knew it was going to happen. But if you don't know it's going to happen, then it's, becomes a, not a good use of money. Because at that time, what I would recommend is that if this, if a tank, another tank was put in service, that just have another odor control system designed along with that tank to treat that tank, and then it just comes along together. So you don't have to worry about odors when it comes online, it has its own.
Right.
That's, that's what I would recommend, unless you knew for sure, we know this is happening in two years, and so, and we know the size of it and all of that, and that's a diff, but I don't, I don't know that that's the case.
Well, I, I guess that's something that I'd have to kind of defer back to the city manager, or, which is that we've talked about, I mean, we can't grow our community until we are able to grow our, you know, infrastructure. We can't grow our infrastructure the way it is now. So either we're going to have to expand what we have, or we're going to have to start, you know, move to something new, completely a new facility. And so, I mean, I would hate to dump all this money into this, you know, and then all of a sudden be like, yeah, you know what, we are at eighty percent, we really need to look at building a new facility, so we're just going to, to scrap it. Because it's not capable of handling anymore.
Right.
I'll do my best. What I would say is, you know, we're at sixty-six percent capacity currently. Eighty-five percent is, is the level that, that will be required to submit a plan to DEQ to tell them how we're going to address that. You know, I, I wish, I wish my crystal ball worked, but it doesn't. You know, there, there are certainly some possibilities for growth, as we, you know, we just, council just discussed on the west side, and then there's potential for some on the automatic annexation along Maple. But again, at this point, we don't have, we don't have any kind of solid numbers and units, and if that's going to go that way, so it is difficult to try and forecast how soon we will be at that eighty-five percent. So whether, whether it's in a year or ten years, or I, I, I wish I had a better answer, but I, I, I just don't.
Okay, but even if it were ten years, shouldn't we be planning for that now, considering how long it takes to process this stuff through? I, I just feel like we're just sort of, keep putting money at stuff, and then, oh, you know what, maybe we should have done something, oh, maybe we should have done something. So that, that's my only concern. I would hate to, to, to do this project and put all of this money into it to find out that it, in two years, five years, it doesn't meet our needs, and we still have another fifteen years to pay the bills on it.
Right, and I concur, and you may recall, I think it was at the last council meeting, we briefly discussed possibly moving forward with a, a wastewater treatment plant sighting study to, to determine where, where a new plant or facility might go and those alternatives. So I think, I can't, I don't, I apologize, I don't recall if that was at an upcoming, if we were going to expound on that at a, at a very, maybe at the next work session or one coming up soon? So I, I, I don't disagree with any, any of your concerns, I have those concerns as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Clark?
Hi, thank you. Bear with me, I'm going to be all over the place today, missing a family funeral to be here. So, I'm going to tag along on her previous comments, because that was one of my questions too, as to how forward, and maybe this is a question for you, Todd, but, like how forward-thinking can we be at the same time as sort of addressing the current issues with odor? I mean, how fast is that process if we're citing locations for new facility? And then what kind of dollar amount are we looking at for a new facility that incorporates some of the technology that we're talking about today?
Sure, well, I guess, Brian, and we have not had this discussion, but, so I apologize for putting you on the spot, but can we parallel those two, is, I mean, obviously, is the design work, right? Moving forward with the current design work, can we parallel that study potentially? Is that feasible?
Absolutely, you could do the design work for the odor control system for your current plant, and in parallel be looking at the longer-term vision for the saline wastewater system. Although, I will state, if you're doing the design work, then you, you are committing to implementing the project at the current capacity. In other words, you couldn't get halfway through the design and then change the sizing of everything. That, that wouldn't, that wouldn't work, but-
Is, is there a way to, I guess, parallel the two designs at the same? I know we talked about that before, like having, you know, two options maybe to kind of play with. I know you said that was very efficient to do that, but I, I guess, is, I don't know how the design process works, but if you could design something for the current capacity alongside of designing something for a forecasted future capacity, whether it's at this location or at a different location? I don't know if that makes sense, and, and/or if it's doable, but I guess, to me, that seems like you're covering both options, and then if the sighting study could be done, and the money worked out, and all that kind of thing, then it's a question of, do we continue on with the current situation? Or do we look at, you know, something that handles the future capacity and a different location? Or, I guess maybe I'm getting too far ahead of what we're talking about tonight, but-
I heard a couple of questions in there.
Sorry.
As far as, if the plant was at a different location, of course, it's clear that this sizing wouldn't impact that. That's independent. I, I really think Jim was correct, that if you grow in the future and you have to build a new tank or a series of tanks, I, I think the cost-effective way is just to put a new unit on those tanks. It, it would be a small part of a much larger cost.
Okay.
I really think that's the way to approach it.
Okay. Some other questions I had, do we think that, I know you mentioned that there was an issue, you know, kind of the, the question of the hours, you know, where, why the change from the fall, or this winter to, to July, and, and it meaning potentially a collection issue, or collection site issue? Is there potential that there's something that we don't know of out, outside the plant that's causing some of this? I know there's been times, like, we've been out, you know, my family and I are fellow council members that have been out and had noticed stuff in the, you know, the sewer sites.
Well, typically, typically the only way that would be happening is if you have, if you have an industry that's all of a sudden changed its process, and is dumping into your sewer something that's very warm water, or low pH, or high BOD, things that just will cause the sulfides to go higher, that, you know, that's always a possibility. But again, we were recording this over a week's period of time, so it wasn't just like something happened, and, you know, it was, whatever it is is going on. I tend to think that it's just the warmer conditions exceeded what we predicted. I think that, I don't think it's any more than that, would be my-
There's no structural thing in the system outside of the plant, I guess?
Oh.
In the piping, or the, I don't know how any of it works, though.
Sure, sure, no, I, no, no, I wouldn't say that would be the cause of it.
Okay. And then the septicage, I know, in the report, there was, you know, there's incidents of increased smells and stuff when the septicage is being unloaded, or, and that's not even what we're taking in? It's when we're unloading it to the trucks to haul it away?
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry, I meant when the trucks are coming, they come in the gate, and they actually, they unload their truck into the septic receiving facility.
Okay.
And so when I say unload, that's what I mean.
Okay.
And it goes through a process and goes, and it gets held into a, in a covered tank at that point.
Okay.
But yeah, that, that twenty-minute process while they're doing that is what I was pointing to that causes a elevated spike.
Okay, so there's, I know there's a couple Saturdays months ago, where they were unloading trucks from the plant to go somewhere else that was causing odor. Is there any way to, to fix that, or enclose it, or is that just one of those things, like it's wastewater treatment plant?
I think it's just one of those house cleaning things that you can't avoid.
Okay.
Something like that, for the unloading of the biosolids here.
Okay. And was that included in the study then, that particular process?
No, that process, the unloading of the biosolids is something that, a system, we can't design anything to treat that. The, the only things that you can do with that would be scheduling.
Okay.
Would be the way to handle that.
Would there be a, and this is a question for you, Bob, is there a way to sort of have a calendar for that, I guess, so that residents would know that, you know, I'm not going to plan a big outside party at this time, because this, you know, they're going to be unloading trucks?
That's really hard to do, because it's, it's so contingent on the weather. It, it has to be applied to the fields before the crop goes in.
Okay.
So the window is, is really narrow, and it's really hard to predict with any certainty more than a week in advance.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to think of the residents and train, you know, whether they have some advanced knowledge that, okay, you know, I, I know I'm going to expect that this is going to smell today, because they did this, you know. I don't know if that's helpful for residents or not, I, I feel like it would be at least-
We, we, we do try that, and we can try to be more vigilant in that. Again, it's, it's, sometimes they'll, they'll tell me they'll be in tomorrow.
Okay.
Because that's the opportunity, they have a lot of fields to cover.
Okay. Gotcha.
Or, the other difficulty is, they tell you, yeah, we're scheduled to be there next week, or two weeks from now, weather goes bad, they get held up for another community that, or another system that they're land applying, and it does, it just, it makes it difficult, because, again, there's many times where, a number of times where Bob has let me know, oh, by the way, we're going to have, they're going to come in and empty the tanks. And then he says, hey, they, they called off, you know, yesterday, they're not going to, for whatever reason, and so then you have to wait a couple of weeks, or again, because of the weather. It's, it just is difficult to say, you know, three times a year on these dates, they're going to be here.
Gotcha. Is there a way to do it, like via social media, on the city website, or that kind of thing? I don't know, again, I don't know if that's important to anybody, but I feel like at least the more knowledge people have, the, the better off we are.
We could potentially do that, if, you know, we could, but again, if they call off, or if, you know-
Right.
Then, so, but that is, I guess, we certainly could, we could do our best, be our best guess.
Right.
That, and if they say, well, I thought you were going to, how come, I guess, my concern would be then if somebody said, well, I, I didn't schedule the party this weekend, because, right, because you said it was going to be there, and it wasn't there, now it's there next weekend, and-
Right. And then, what, I think, we touched, or Janet touched on this a little bit, about what is the, I guess, the quality control on the filter manufacturers, or what's their record on? I know we're dealing with the filter issues right now, with the manufacturer that's having issues, warranty issues and all that, but do they have a pretty good track record?
Well, there's, there's multiple that would be wanting to bid this project. And I, and I don't, I'm not familiar with the requirements that Celine has for their bidding process, whether it be an or equal, or we can just name three manufacturers and that's it, or how we have to do that. But we would write our specification as tightly as we possibly could to get who we believe you would want in here.
Okay.
We know them all, and we have lots of experience with them all, and there are some out there that you wouldn't want. And we will do everything we can within the limits of what you give to us to keep those guys out.
Okay. All right, and then, I think, that's probably, again, I would just stress that the timeline of the process be as expeditious as it possibly can be, and I think that goes without saying, but I have to say, so, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Dearborn?
Thank you. A lot of the questions have already been asked in terms of what real issues are. But I, again, would like to get back on to the whole concern about the, what happens at the headworks, when all of a sudden, you'd mentioned that the, you know, the readings are just off the scale there, and also in the sludge tank, or whatever. And you mentioned two communities, what was the other community? Do you recall, and what kind of industries did they have?
Oh, it was, it was actually in Arkansas. And it was a municipal wastewater treatment plant, just like this one. And, and we did cool weather testing and warm weather testing, just like we did here. And we had a recommendation, thinking that that was the way to go on the cool weather testing, but told them, just like we did, just wait though, because, and sure enough, it came back very similar to what we were seeing here, that, that was in recent time.
Which is kind of interesting, because the type of spikes and the smells that we've had this summer, we've had during the winter. So it's clear, it can't necessarily always be related to warm weather, because-
Right.
Having experiences, because I live on that side of town.
Right.
The smell has been as bad in the cold weather. So one of my concerns is that we need to address, yes, collecting the odors and treating those, but there's something with the process, or something that's not right. And I don't know if that happened as a result of the redesign, because we seem to have gotten the worst case of how it smells now as a result of the redesign of the flat plant, and the redesign of it, and re, I guess, revamping of the whole system. So that, again, I kind of go back to the design stage of the whole factory, that, or the whole plant system that we need to look at. The other piece of it is, would stormwater running into the system help alleviate some of that? I don't know if we have some stormwater connections that still come into the system that are being treated?
We have some infiltration issues. We have a separate storm sewer system, but we do see a spike in the flow with rains.
And does that attribute to anything that we know of, potentially bringing in? Does it come in through our storm drains, or is it just something that's coming in from house drains?
I think it's coming in from, from both, actually, and I think if anything, the, the stormwater may help alleviate, it's weakening it, you know, the concentration of the wastewater. That's just my guess, we never really looked at it, it wasn't part of the study. But yes, we do get a lot of infiltration.
Because I know, if you stand in front of some of our storm drains, they smell exactly the same way, that we have that similar type of odor. So it may be that cleaning out our storm drains may be another contributing factor, that, to have that biological matter out of there more often and frequently. The other questions in terms of the interim measures that we talked about, what kind of measurements do we have now with the new media in the scrubbers? Have we measured that at all, in terms of the odor scrubber? We know the chemical scrubber is supposedly still working at ninety-nine percent, but the do-all, now we put the new media, did we measure any of the output that's coming out of that?
No, we have not, and I, what I should have said earlier with Ms. Dillon was that the, we had two odor scrubber, we had two odor studies in the past, not studies, but we had two odor construction projects to eliminate the odors. Both of them stressed the RBCs and the primary tanks. Webster's study indicates that a majority of the odors are coming from areas that are not vented to the existing scrubbers. So even if we did increase the efficiency of the scrubbers, which we really don't have a way of measuring the efficiency, it's still not going to address seventy percent of the odors.
That's the answer I wanted. That's the answer I wanted, because that's kind of the idea, is understanding that, and again, which raises the question, is what happened in the last three years as a result of that switchover, and that we have an even worse smell than we had before? And I'm not, I'm just wanting to make sure that that's, I think, part of the contribution to it. The other question is, of course, making sure that we have a process in place that makes sure that vents and things and gaps, or, I mean, doors and so forth are closed, and so that'll be a thing in terms of operational aspect. One of the things I did see, too, is that you mentioned that we won't be using the chemicals as much, so we have a savings on that, but also, wouldn't that reduce the amount of manual intervention that we would have to do, in terms of our staffing, having to make sure that those chemicals and everything go in?
Yeah.
And we probably didn't account for that in this study.
Yeah, and yeah, and I, and this study level doesn't get into that level of detail, but that, but true.
But it helps in that situation, because even in this situation, where it talks about approximately $68,000 less in terms of media, or whatever we have to have every year, in terms of less chemicals-
Right.
But then that comes in there, too, so I'm looking at the benefits of doing this more now, although we have all the things that we potentially could do in the future, there's some offsets in this, it's still gonna be a cost, but I don't see how in less than 10 years, we would have a new plant in place. And in fact, we potentially could expand this existing plant, or go across the road and expand on that property, so the fact that we invest in this may not necessarily mean that we're stuck. We've got to do something now, and from my perspective, the approaches that you've mentioned already, I think, have some cost containment in it that isn't necessarily throwing more money out, it's basically recapturing some of the funds. The other question I have was more of, how will we maintain monitoring after we put the new system in place? I want to make sure that whatever we do put in there continues to continually monitor that, so that we know that everything is working, that even if we had to put up some types of sensors or something 150 feet outside of the septic system, that we can put that in place. So, I didn't know what was built into this plan for that potential.
Right. Well, there are systems, there are, you know, instruments that you can purchase to put on your fence line to, to monitor, the problem, the thing that we have found, though, is that they don't really help you, because the concentrations that, that instruments need to read to be able to, to catch it at a fence line are so low, that those instruments tend to get out of whack very, very easily, and, and it's hard to keep them maintained. The better way that what we've seen is for the staff to, to purchase a portable hydrogen sulfide meter, and to be able to have a regular time where they can go out, there's testing ports, where they can go out and test the air coming out of the stack of these systems, and they can see if they're getting any kind of hydrogen sulfide at all coming out, and that would, that would tell them that there's, there's a problem, it's time to either make an adjustment with the biological system, or that the media in the carbon system needs to change.
And so, I'm glad to have those recommendations, and hopefully they'll be a part of our ongoing maintenance with the system. Lastly, and this is probably gonna be more of a question when we move on to the financing, about moving ahead with design and everything, so I'll let that go in that case. At this point, that's all I have.
Very good. Councilmember Menzel.
Thank you. One of the problems I'm, to understand with our current system is that we can have unexpected chemical dumps, or unexpected stormwater that affects our ability with our current system to control odor. I suspect because this system we're talking about is vented, and air, that those events would have much less of an impact, is that right?
You're saying that if you were to have some, 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 something that gets dumped into the sewer that comes into the plant and causes an odor problem, that, right, so, so, yeah, all of that air gets, in this scenario, all that air gets collected and treated, and whether it be high or low, or medium, it gets treated, so, yeah.
So, so it sounds like this, this alternative we're discussing is much more reliable than anything that we have now, and-
Right.
I, I appreciated what Ms. Dillon had to say about what at all possible can we do now to help our neighbors, because the timeline, even though it's ambitious, just feels terribly, terribly long for people who have been dealing with this for such a long time. So, for example, on your report, on page 47, there's an item number nine that talks about covers needing to be modified and replaced, I saw that several times in your report. It, could we try to start doing that now? Would it make a difference now if we took those steps?
Right. So, these are permanent modifications that I'm talking about here, but there are, you know, simple things that are, they're kind of neoprene mats that you can lay down over these, I think you probably have some, yeah. The, the problem, though, and here is the thing that why I hesitate to get into that, is because if you don't draw out the air from underneath those, it's still, the air still has to come out somewhere, and so you have to, almost, you have to seal it, and then you have to draw the air out, and if you don't do either or, then it still comes out somewhere.
Let me just get back on track. So, what I'm hearing you say is that the, that, the mechanics of creating that air pressure is really, we can replace all the covers we want now, it's not gonna make a difference until we have that ductwork in, in place, and, and have that air pressure working for us?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that's a bummer, 'cause I was hoping that we could do something. I also had a question on expansion. I asked this question at a previous work meeting, and I, I believe, I said, well, what is the general plan for expansion? And I was told that we would expand on our current site, and that the solutions we were looking at could be built upon to, to handle expansion. Is, is that no longer true? There's some wrinkled brows.
I don't know of any long-term plan for your plant, so there is room to build a small amount of additional capacity.
Okay.
But the, the currently sized odor control units that Jim has in his report are for your current processes.
Okay.
If, if I may, I want to address this, this issue, 'cause it's now been brought up by several council members, and it's, it's a good issue, and I addressed it at our last council meeting, I believe as a discussion item relating to the Andalina Farms proposal. We do need, as a city, to have a long-term vision about our wastewater capacity. However, it is a complex and multi-dimensional issue. The possibility exists, as Mr. Ruble indicated, about creating additional capacity at our existing site. Conversely, we could find a, a new site, which of course would, would require us not only to purchase that, that property, if it's not currently within our inventory, a plan, finance, and of course, develop a, an additional plant. And then, of course, on top of all that, you know, and again, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, we're also talking about getting some of those utilities to some sites that potentially would, would want to be serviced by City of Celine Water and Sewer. But to, to complicate the matter further, and I'll go back to something that I believe Ms. Tahar, Mayor Protem Tahar, said at the last meeting, another component of our discussion is whether we want to expand, because I, I heard some voices who said they're not really that emphatic on, on, their, their belief is not as emphatic as, as mine, and maybe some others. So, again, I think there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of issues to discuss, and I think as Mr. Gierbaugh stated, we do need to do something now. Our residents aren't going to tolerate delays, nor should they, and I think as the experts indicated, some of the existing technology, even if we were to expand, would still be, be useful and helpful in mitigating odor, so, not to complicate things further, but-
Right. No, that's helpful. So, I guess, in, in question of capacity for the alternative number six, right now we're at 66%, and how much more capacity can these solutions handle? Can they handle until it's time to build? Or when we hit 85%, do we need to do something else?
You're talking about wastewater capacity?
Mm-hmm.
Going from one to, well, as long as you're not building additional tanks, the systems will be fine.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
It's just when you start, you know, having a whole nother big tank, and you've got a whole other cover and-
Right.
-draining another, it's, it won't be able to do that.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. I also, in the report on page 48, there was a mention of a concrete coating, item, uh-oh, item 18? Okay, so, at the bottom of the page, you know, Mr. Skull does not believe that concrete corrosion is a concern at this time. Mr. Skull, is that the coating that was done this, this past summer, or a different one?
No, I'm sorry. That was the coating that was originally put on the tanks, and it is still in place, and there's no visible signs of corrosion caused by the gas buildup.
And is there an anticipated, like in five years, that coating could go, or you think, oh, it's pretty good, it's lasted this long?
I don't think my crystal ball works any better than that, so I, I can't answer that. Doesn't appear to be an issue?
On the report, page 51, there have been some questions about receiving, you know, unloading septicage, and I'm just hoping that while we're working on this, that a plan can be put into place, and somebody said, you know, could we have some more transparency with residents to the best of our ability, you know, understanding their, but, you know, this is a very general statement, septicage receiving facility. WEA recommends the city consider limiting the period of time each day when haulers can unload septicage. So, are you clear with what you might do to help with that problem?
Yes, we've already, we're gonna eliminate Saturday and weekend dumpings, period, it's the best way to do it. The, the hours are restricted from eight to three during the week, because we figure most people are working, it would impact the fewest people. We can look at, limit it even further, if you choose to, to go that route.
Ms. McClellan talked about lessons learned from equipment that is failing right now, that, the wheel, the plastic wheel, and the bearing, there's a piece of equipment that we installed, and it keeps failing, and the manufacturer has been coming and helping us extended warranty, right? The Nova?
No, filters.
Okay. So, is there anything that happened there that we can learn when we're selecting equipment for this purchase?
Bob, I want to borrow the microphone between Mr. Ruble and Mr. Ross.
Thank you.
You know, that may be a question more for the engineers, who are gonna spec out the, the job-
Uh-huh.
More so than me.
Okay.
I don't have a lot of experience dealing with companies outside of the ones that we are dealing with now, so it might be a question for Brian.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that discussion could go on quite a while, you know, these construction projects are very complex. Something always goes wrong that you do your best to, to manage. The only thing that I think would, I will say that I think is a good idea is, before we accept the equipment, in this case, because it's one isolated piece of equipment, I think it works pretty well, I would suggest that we require the, the manufacturer to, and actually more, more the general contractor, to demonstrate it over like a 30 or a 60-day period, before we, we issue payment for that. That's not always possible in longer, and projects that have multiple components to it, because you have, you have to get on to the next component, and you have to put the first component in, in service. But in this case, I think it probably would be a good technique, and one that we can implement.
I appreciate that, I just, anything that we can learn from, from what has happened, I would love to apply and just continue to improve, whatever process we can. Mr. Skull, are, is there other wastewater treatment plant equipment that's coming up for replacement? Any type of, you know, we're putting this chunk of money in?
We are looking at replacing the flood control pump, that's been on the CIP list for, for quite some time. As far as wastewater plant, no, eventually I'd like to slowly replace the inflight pumps, but that's just a standard CIP-type, type improvement.
I can clarify one thing, too, I've been asked about the lifespan of these systems. There is, there, the fan itself, the motor that goes along with the fan, it's a very small item relative to it, but that, that part will not last 20 years. I'm realizing I'm talking about the whole thing is 20 years, and yes, the big whole thing, 20 years, but the fan itself, that motor, every so many years, will need to be replaced, and it's part of a, more of a maintenance issue. But I just wanted to make sure, a few years down the road, someone goes, oh, you told us, and we have to replace this motor, but there's small things like that, so, okay, sorry.
I think this is my last question. And just to go back to anything that we can do to help neighbors close to the plant, you talked about eliminating weekends for, for unloading septicage, and limiting the hours. Are there, how do other communities handle this? What are, what are the best practices for communities that are similar to ours for that?
I wish I had a good answer for that, and that we, we are fairly unique that we do receive septicage, most communities don't. As far as best practices, I, we are in a unique situation where we are literally on top of the neighbors. Most places, the wastewater plant's gonna be built outside of town, or, you know, not so close to the neighbors. Sometimes what happens, the plants are built, like in Chelsea, the plant is built, and then encroachment from the residents happen later on. As far as best practices, I, I think we're trying to do the best we can now. I think that the real issue is, if we look at building another plant, we really have to look at the location of the building relative to the community as far as wind. Generally speaking, the wind's out of the southwest here, so if we look at a place to relocate the plant, I would suggest it be not southwest of the city.
I appreciate that. Respectfully, one of the plants we visited did have neighbors on the line, at, at the edge of, of the property for the wastewater treatment plants, and, and one of the plants had neighbors on three sides. So, when we went out to the west side of the state, we tried to visit similar communities that had a, a similar situation as ours. So, I understand our location is a challenge, it seems like some other communities have found a solution, and as far as best practices, you know, I, I think so, can be an answer, but I think it's better to have a data-driven answer for that. And a, and the business case, this is what these communities do, I think it's helpful to have some type of benchmarking comparison, what do successful communities do? We don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can figure out what other communities do, and, and we can replicate those, and get good results. I believe in that. That's all.
Thank you. Well, let me make one quick comment, sort of piggybacking on short-term solutions to alleviate some of the odor issues. Bob, I want to jump back to the do-all odor scrubbers. As you know, we have some raw data that indicates that when the dual scrubbers are offline, we get fewer odor complaints. We have some raw data.
Correct.
In addition to that, remind me, the do-all odor scrubbers are currently working at-
We tested it, it was 20% removal.
20% removal, okay. And to Mr. Skull's earlier point, even if they're working at 100% capacity, they're only dealing with- capacity, they're only dealing with thirty percent of the odors.
Correct.
Okay. Um, well, my suggestion is, um, I'm not sure it's an appropriate allocation of financial resources or staff time to continue to work on repairing the do-all odor scrubbers. That's an operational issue more than a policy decision, so I'll leave it to you, Bob. You're the expert. But it seems to me in the short term, that's one thing that we could do, um, to alleviate some of the, the odors that our residents are experiencing. And again, on the surface, it seems counterintuitive, but when those systems aren't working properly, it simply exacerbates the problem, at least based on the data that we have currently.
I would agree with you on that. And before this study, again, we concentrated on the RBCs and the primary treatment as the main source of the odor. After the study, we realized that that's only a portion, a small portion of the overall problem. So we've been throwing resources at these scrubbers thinking that's the logical way to go. That's obviously where the problem is and we find out it isn't at this point. So I would have to agree with you that I, I'd still like to give it a shot if it's not too costly.
Just ask you to monitor it and, and be sensitive to, to that particular concern. Gentlemen, we appreciate your patience. Roger and Warren, um, we've asked a lot of technical questions. Do you want to talk a little bit about the financing subsequent to your presentation? We'll work our way around the table again.
Sure.
Address any questions and concerns that you have and then try and develop consensus, okay? Quickly, please.
I have one question before we move on to the financial side, which is, goes to the NOVA filters. If we decide that we have to, to move away from the NOVA filters, how is that going to impact this project?
It, it won't have any impact. That there's not odor coming out of that building, there, that's not related.
So they're not hooked into the system at all?
That building, no. That, that's, odors are our strongest at the, at the beginning of the process, the headworks, the RBCs. This, this is so far down the line, uh, odor is not coming.
That's fine. What I want to make sure is that we're not building to a building that may not be there. That if we have to, if we have to go with a different project and have to build a new structure.
Not, no, that building would be there. Uh, that building was there before. So let's say we, somewhere down the road, you do replace the NOVA filter. Uh, I don't, you would just put it in that same building.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Roger, or excuse me, Warren, do you want to grab the microphone that's between Councilwoman Dillon and McClellan? Gentlemen, please. And again, I, I referenced earlier this evening, uh, you provided some supplemental materials that were placed at everyone's seat when they entered the chamber this evening. Please.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, again, I'm Roger Swets from Dickinson Wright, um, partner of Scott Smith, the City Attorney's Office, and I work with the city on the legal aspects of, of borrowing money for your projects. Warren is with Robert W. Baird and he advises the city with respect to the financial aspects of the projects. We've talked about this project in different iterations of it with staff and, and done some analyzing of it and have been asked to address several, um, questions in particular, but are happy to kind of address whatever questions you have. But some of the things we've been asked to talk about are, one, between an SRF, a State Revolving Fund process for financing, or if the city just went out and did this financing directly in the market, does one have a time-saving differential over the other? We've also been asked about how this project would affect the city's debt limits and bonding capacity. And then we've looked at, um, some cost differentials between doing an SRF project and doing a project directly out there in the market as to both the cost of issuing the bonds and the interest rates and the debt service over the life of the bonds. I'll start by saying a few words about timing and to do that, I want to talk just a little bit about the process that you go through normally to issue a bond. If you told us, we want to borrow five million dollars and we want that money in sixty days, we could be very close to going out there and doing that. Um, and so in that sense, yeah, we could, we could just jump in and do some things really quickly here. But what typically happens, there are some preliminary legal things, there's, there's what's called a forty-five day notice that we have to give and, and that notice will depend on what type of bond issue you, you issue and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But there are some preliminary steps, but once that timing is passed, legally we can go forward. But the typical prudent way that most communities will address a project like this is to get, you get your design engineering done, so you've got some engineer's estimates as to what it's going to cost. You then actually go out for bids and get your construction bids and you get all that in hand so that before you issue debt, you can size the project based on, um, fairly firm construction bids and then building in some contingency just, just to cover the whatevers. And so that way, you're, you're, you're going forward and knowing that what you're borrowing is as close to possible as knowing as to what you're going to need. If you, if you jump the gun on that, there are two possibilities. Well, three, you, you may guess right and have the right amount of money, but you may guess low and not have enough money. And in that case, then you would face the possibility of having to spend the cost of issuing bonds and going out and doing a second bond issue, which is not efficient. The other possibility is you borrow too much money. And typically with these municipal finance projects, you can't prepay the bonds in the first ten years. And so if you end up having too much money, you borrow that money, you're paying interest on it and you can't, you know, you don't need it to spend it on the project. So that's why that, that design bidding and once construction bids are in, we, we go do the bond issue, that's, that's why that's kind of the typical approach. And if that is the approach you, it is a council would decide to take, um, I, I think timing for this is not really a bonding issue as much as it is, um, a design and a bidding issue for construction. SRF is going to require you to do that because they take kind of the typical prudent approach and, and the bond issue would not close until construction bids were in hand and we had time to digest all that and make sure the bond amount is just right. If you did do a market issue, that decision would be up to you, um, but if you were going to do it kind of in the typical fashion, you're probably looking at roughly the same time schedule either way. The SRF closes only four times a year, so you've either got to hit the March closing or you would do a June closing or typically a September closing. There is a December closing, but that's not used very often. So I think in this case, your timing that I heard in the PowerPoint is a little bit on the edge to hit the March closing. I don't know if we, you know, if, if you guys think we could tighten that up, maybe we could hit the March closing, but if not, we'd be looking at a June closing for SRF. If design is done by the end of April or if bids are back in by April, you know, we could jump that by maybe a month, four to six weeks if you did, um, if you did your own direct financing outside of the SRF. But that's really kind of, I think, about the best we could do unless you said you just want to go borrow as soon as possible and you're, you're going to, you know, not wait for, for construction bids to come in. So on timing, I think, you know, we don't have a whole lot of difference between the two different, um, the two different routes. The next issue, just I'll say a brief word about is about capacity and then I'll turn it over to Warren to talk a little bit more about capacity and cost. But as a, as a, as a Michigan home rule city, you have a ten percent legal debt limit. That is a, that is a pretty high number, which you're probably, hopefully not going to get to since I think that, what does that give us, Warren, about sixty or about thirty-six million, um, in total debt that the city could have. More particularly for this project, however, there are two types of bonds that you could issue. There's a bond called a revenue bond. That bond only pledges the rates and charges collected by the sewer system and, and the sewer system would pay the debt and the city general fund wouldn't, could never be tapped for the debt. Those kind of bonds don't count against your debt limit. So from a legal perspective, they, they wouldn't use any capacity. And if you were doing an SRF bond, we would use a revenue bond and so it would not legally impact your, your bonding capacity. If we, the, the numbers that Warren is going to talk about in a minute did not use a revenue bond for the city just borrowing in the marketplace for the, for this project. And the reason for that is in the marketplace, revenue bonds are expensive. SRF doesn't care, they give you a low subsidized interest rate either way, but in the marketplace, you're going to pay a, a little bit higher interest rate, but you're also going to need to fund what's called a debt service reserve, so you'd have to borrow another two and a half, or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, basically.
Roughly ten percent.
Roughly ten percent and put that away kind of in a lockbox. So it's, it's not really efficient. So we looked at doing what's called a general obligation limited tax bond. It's a bond that technically would pledge the general fund of the city, although nobody would plan that you're going to use taxes to pay for that. You would still use sewer revenues to pay for it, but it gets a better interest rate and avoids this debt service fund because the bondholders know if you run short for some reason, there's, the city is always standing behind this bond issue. That type of bond issue, you have a debt limit of five percent of the city's state equalized value. The city currently has about, so that would give you a total, um, a total capacity of almost nineteen million of those type of bonds and you currently have about six-point-six-seven million outstanding. So you've got quite a bit of capacity there and from a legal perspective, I think that's enough capacity that we would recommend you do that type of bond since it's more cost-effective and, and eat up a little bit of that capacity if you did not do SRF. All that said, there are some financial, um, they're not typically debt limits or technically capacity, but obviously the more you borrow, the more that affects the way you're viewed financially out in the marketplace. And so I'll let Warren talk a little bit about that.
I actually did a very good job summarizing most of my presentations, so I want to say...
Well, you have the most important part when it comes to costs.
Yeah. Actually, Roger is right. Uh, we were asked to really look at two different scenarios. To the extent we can expedite an open market financing, how would we finance it? You know, we've recommended or we would recommend that you finance it with general obligation capital improvement bonds. You certainly have the capacity. Your interest costs are probably about fifteen to twenty basis points less over the life of the transaction and again, you don't have to fund a debt service reserve. And I think that's very important. You'd be adding another three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, you know, to the, um, equation and you'd be paying, you know, on an open market financing, three percent plus. And then while that money sits in the bank, uh, you might be earning fifty basis points today, maybe you're up to sixty basis points. So it just simply costs you money to have that money just sitting there. One of the things we could also look is an surety bond, but that complicates things and increases your issuance expenses, um, upfront. One of the other things about, you know, an open market financing that we looked at is that you have market risk. Uh, we wouldn't be issuing these bonds, you know, really until you know how large the project is and we don't know what's going to happen to interest rates between now and when you need the money, which is going to be April of two thousand and eighteen. A lot of things can happen. Now, if my crystal ball did work and I knew where interest rates were going, you would never see me here ever again. I, I, I'd just be living large. So, um, so you have market risk associated with the capital improvement bonds. The SRF, um, again, that interest rate is fixed, it's not going to change, as Roger pointed out, it's exempt from your legal debt margin. Um, and the way that we issue them through the State Revolving Loan Fund, we issue them as junior lien revenue bonds. So we really don't have to finance a debt service reserve and it doesn't impact future public, you know, offerings of revenue bonds should at some point you decide to go down that road. The, the numbers that we understood that were eligible for SRF financing would be two million eight ninety, which is option number six, you know, plus issuance expenses. Somebody asked about additional capital improvements that they wanted to finance. Staff identified, um...
It was a pump station generator and flood, flood pump station.
Flood pump station, totaling five-hundred-and-four thousand. That, I understand, is not eligible for SRF financing. So we have, if, go ahead.
That was in the project plan.
Oh, okay.
So DQ has approved that.
Oh, they have?
Two-point-nine.
Well, the difference is the SRF project plan was prepared from Webster's draft study. The final study, the size of the improvements increased there from the cost increase. So SRF would require us to go back to them with the increased cost.
Oh, and that's not what I understood, but you know what?
That's, that's good news.
Because it actually makes our argument more compelling, you know, so, um, I, I appreciate...
We had sized the SRF numbers assuming we'd have to do two bond issues, one SRF bond issue and one small GO bond issue for the other part. If we can do that all together through SRF, that's going to reduce the interest cost and reduce the cost of issuance on that scenario.
You know, uh, market risk aside, um, if you looked at your total debt service, you know, of both scenarios, um, the difference is about two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars over the life of the issue. Now, we sized in the open market financing a two percent underwriter's discount. We actually expect that to come in probably around, um, one percent and instead of two percent. So if we could add that back to the differential, you're looking at about a three-hundred-and-sixteen, three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollar benefit by moving forward with the SRF financing. And now that we know the, you know, the additional, um, pump station generator and flood pump station is eligible for SRF financing, that's going to actually lower by comparison, um, your costs even further to the open market financing. So your savings would be well in excess of the three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars that we've just estimated here.
And I think the other thing we didn't know, Warren, when we did the numbers, is that if the city qualifies for, for debt...
Principal forgiveness.
Principal forgiveness, that's another fifty thousand on top of that plus interest savings that would be saved to the city through the SRF. And then one other final nice little aspect to the SRF is you don't, if you did an open market borrowing, you would take the full three-point-whatever million upfront and start paying interest on it from day one, even though while it sits in your bank account, you're making point, you know, two or point three. With SRF, you don't pay interest on the money until you take it and you don't have to take it till you need it. So there's going to be some significant amount of interest savings upfront doing an SRF bond issue.
Throughout the construction period.
Yeah, right.
Anything else, gentlemen? Good?
Good.
All right. Uh, Mr. Hark, can I again start with you and I'll end with, uh, Councilwoman Mitchell? Any, uh, financial questions for either our bond counsel or our financial advisor?
Um, just to be clear, you were recommending that we take the SRF route?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the timing difference between the bond issuance, the general obligation bonds, and the SRF, assuming that we have to wait until June for the SRF?
Assuming that if you, on the general obligation route, would wait until you had construction bids in hand and assuming that the SRF goes according to schedule. I can't promise you that it is, but I would say maximum eight weeks difference.
Thank you.
Stillness.
Timing was also my issue. So eight weeks back or forward?
Uh, the, the general obligation bond would, could potentially maybe be done about eight weeks sooner.
Okay.
Um, and it would cost you four hundred thousand, maybe a little bit more.
We can certainly refine it, but now knowing that, you know, the, you know, the pump station generator and flood pump station are eligible, that's just going to increase the savings associated with an SRF financing over an open market financing.
Okay. And we're sure that those are included or, they were, they were in the initial proposal, correct?
They were in the project plan.
Right.
Which was approved by the DQ. The dollars that are in the project plan were published as approved dollars. What has changed is the cost of the odor control has gone up. So that needs to be updated with the DQ, like we talked about it when we applied and this could happen.
Right.
And SRF.
Right.
So the SRF is a bureaucratic process. I can't promise you that when you're dealing with the bureaucrats, they're going to, they're going to meet all the timing and so that we would hope for and that they would approve everything we would hope for. You know, they should, but I can't promise you that and I'm sure Brian can't promise you that either.
But, so I guess the timing, they can't, we're not going to do anything with financing till we have everything else in place, which means we've got to do our design and we've got to do our bids and we have to have... got to do our bids and we have to have all of those ducks in a row first.
I think the biggest thing you can do to, to jumpstart timing is get design engineering started. That's, that's the biggest, that's the biggest hurdle at this point.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Is there a possibility we could still meet the April time for the SRF?
It's, it's March and that-
Oh, March.
Would depend on design engineering.
We would have to, the designer would have to be done approximately November. And that is a Herculean task to design a $3 million system that lasts you 20 years, get it correct in a couple of months. I, I don't, I'm not certain Mr. Swett's analysis of the schedule. I don't know why either funding will take, funding will take longer. The closing might be a little different, but you can still proceed with various tasks and keep the same overall schedule.
Anything further, Mr. Seale? Do you want to continue?
Okay. Now I'm really confused. Can you elaborate on what you were just saying then about the timing?
The type, the design bidding and award schedule to me is nearly identical. Took it to two months. We still need roughly four months to design. We still need six, six weeks plus or minus to advertise for contract to get the bids. Then we come to you, we award the contract to a company, it takes time for the insurance. So where the, where the, I don't believe we, the schedule that's laid out will ever stop for weeks and wait for a loan. It would close somewhere along that process.
The, the, I'm basing what I'm saying off of this project schedule that the engineers put up there. So if, if that moves one way or the other, my thoughts would move one way or the other. But you'll notice it says advertising award contract, March to April of 2018. I think to meet, and you probably know better than I do, Brian, but to meet the March timeframe, you'd need to be awarding the contract in February.
The March goes in May.
So if you're going to be awarding, if you could get to the point of move that advertising award up to February, you could close in March. And if, you know, that's just a big job. If you're not there, you awarded in May, you do your bond closing in June, it kind of sounds like that's kind of your best case scenario. But again, it all depends on facts on the ground. And we're just laying out the scenarios. We're here to do what you direct us to do. So if you said you want open markets, you don't want to worry about that, we're happy to take you there. We just want you to know what the cost of that's going to be and, you know, relatively timing what the benefit is.
Okay.
Which is not huge, but-
Okay.
I think I understand. Brian, Mr. Rubel, why don't we, Mr. Giribar, Councilwoman Mitchell, will you get that microphone down to him? Thank you very much. Mr. Rubel, if you want to-
I think I understand where, where our disconnect is. Roger's schedule that it could get moved up would be if design could get done early in November. And I don't see that happening. In fact, Jim, when I, when I suggested four months, Jim didn't like that a bit. He wanted, he wanted more time. So I, I think that's the only way that this two month is realized.
Possible that we might even be later than June or?
No, I think, I think this schedule can be withheld if it is aggressively executed.
So on this schedule, if we did open market bonds, we took, say we take construction bids the first week of April, we could be in the bond market within a week and close by roughly May 1st. If you're doing SRF and you're on for the June schedule, you're going to be closing about roughly June 21st-ish. I'm not, that's what it was, I think, this year, depending where that falls in the, in the calendar. Third to fourth week.
Hold on, real quick, Mr. Seale, I want to make sure Ms. Dill is, is done with her questions. Lot of question.
Okay. I'm going to move off of that. My next question was from, is for Mr. Rubel again. Back in the day when we were talking about this, there was issues about whether this was the right route because we had to take what they gave us, meaning we had to do whatever they prescribed, which wasn't necessarily what we wanted. We had to go the cheapest route, correct?
The Michigan Department of Environmental Quality requires you to implement the alternative that has the lowest present worth cost. That will need to be updated through a process with them now that we have the Webster final report.
So is what they're proposing meet that criteria?
But it's not what we applied for in June because we have new information now.
Okay.
So the alternative that Jim talked about meets that criterion. It just needs to go back to the DEQ for a revision.
And what is that, what is the timeframe for that process?
I, I can't promise you all the steps they go through. They, they qualify that very clearly to me, that they need to see it.
Okay.
So whenever you authorize somebody to go back to the DEQ, that will happen and we will get more direction from them. It will not, if, it will not affect your loan closing date.
Okay.
It, it's just interim steps along the way.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Seale, did you have something further to say?
Just that, so if my numbers are roughly right, we'd save about $400,000 by going with the SRF and save potentially six to eight weeks. So that would be a cost of about 8% of the project or 12% of the project?
Well, you would lose six to eight weeks, but you would, so, so basically, yeah, you'd be paying roughly 400,000 more to get it done six to eight weeks earlier if you did not do SRF.
Pretty good. Now that's annual. Now you have to divide it by 52 times, times eight. But you're good.
Is that it, Mr. Seale?
That's it, thank you.
This is McCloud.
Yeah, that was going to be my question is, we're essentially, to move the project up two months, it's going to cost us $400,000. Right? I mean, we don't-
That's, that's what we can do here.
Okay. My question is that design schedule, sorry, I'm a designer, I'm an interior designer by trade and so, is there, there is no potential for Herculean efforts, I guess is my question? I mean, we're, I'm looking at that schedule and thinking if we get it by November, that's only a month difference. And then that, that, that puts us in the window of potentially making that March deadline for the SRF versus June. I know you don't want to say yes to that, so that's just, is there any possible way to do that? Because that's really where the, where the time difference is, correct? I mean, it's not even so much with the funding, it's more to have your ducks in a row with the design process. Let me just, because I know that you just want to say that that's impossible. Let me just go to this then. Is there a potential way to do the design process as an estimate to do, to, so that we could do other finance options, you know?
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can address that. Not with the SRF, but if you did it with open markets, the city could bond based on engineers' estimates instead of waiting for construction results to come in and more precisely size the bond issue. There's just some risk that that's not going to be quite the right number. If you're willing to take that risk, yes, you could do that.
Or if you don't bond for enough and the cost coming higher, are you going to fill the gap?
Right. What is the price, I mean, I know we were talking $400,000 for, for eight weeks, what would be the difference potential? I mean, maybe we don't know, but-
Well, the, the, the cost difference would be about the same. You know, if, if, if you've got design done by December, you could be potentially in the market in January, so you could, you, you know, then you're, then you're, you're bumping it, you know, five months maybe.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Could I ask, Roger, we, it's funny, we had this conversation before the meeting about another community and I, maybe that same scenario applies, that once they get bids, they, I think I see the, where the difference is. Whereas open market, the city could be in a position to close a loan very quickly within days or weeks of getting those bids. With SRF, there's a six or eight week lag there. This other community we were, we were talking about before this meeting elected to award a contract prior to the loan closing to get it, get it proceeded. So in that scenario, there would be no difference in time.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good point. And actually, I need to refine my answer to you a little bit because in the scenario that you're raising, we could be out in the marketplace in January, you'd be borrowing money then, but if you're still not awarding construction contracts until April, you've got the money, but you're still not doing any work. I think what Brian is suggesting is that kind of a different scenario would be possible if the DEQ would let us do it. And we'd need to make sure they'd let us do it. But if you were willing to take the risk, you could, as soon as contracts are awarded in April or received in April, award them and begin construction even though you don't have the financing lined up yet. And then we would close on the bond issue as soon as we could. And you might have to handle some bills in the interim, but you could do that. Now, you're taking a risk because, you know, if something happens-
And the SRF funding doesn't come through.
You've got big bills to pay without the money. And I used to say those kind of things don't happen, but then 9/11 happened and the bond market went away for a few months. Then 2008 happened and the bond market went away for a few months. Now, the bright side is that even as bad as those things were, it was just a couple month delay until things were back to normal again. But I, you know, I wouldn't be able to tell you in that scenario that you're, you're not taking a risk. It would be a risk. But yeah, we worked with a community this summer that closed in the June SRF. They began construction on their project in March because it had, it was a, it was a vacation community and they had to get it done. And they, they, they were fine with the risk.
Anything further, Councilwoman McCloud?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Rubel, do you want to make sure, Brian, that that microphone gets to Mr. Giribar? Mr. Giribar, what is yours?
Just a couple of questions. I mean, from my perspective, when I look at this, the SRF fund is the way to go. Because of the conditions and everything else and basically our ability to borrow and there's other stuff that we're going to have to borrow against at some point too. But I know we have enough of a gap in terms of how much we can borrow, but no one ever wants to max it out. No one wants to necessarily go the more risky route of those, the general bonds. In terms of the state permitting, what is the likelihood of a two-month turnaround? That's, that's the piece where I'm like thinking, that's the bigger, the bigger unknown than the other stuff.
We've had pretty good luck with that. I, I would not expect that to be a critical element of the schedule. In fact, there may even be some opportunity to apply a little bit early rather than the design get 100% done, you know, get it 90% done and, and speed that along. So I do not anticipate that to be a problem.
So we could actually schedule components of the design going into the permitting process ahead of time, is what you're saying? You don't have to have it all done?
I'm saying that every last I and T on a, on a, a drawing might not have to be there to get your permits. So you could, if you were worried about the duration of the permitting, you could start it in December and give the state more time. But this particular permit process has not been an issue in hundreds of projects of ours, so.
So then if we're saying that four months is still not a reasonable period of time and we saved a month, that's why I'm wondering, is there any ability to meet the March deadline if we were to be able to save time on even permitting? Or is it, where there's no way we're going to meet March deadline? I just want to, yes, no? At this point, we might as well just say yes, no.
I, I'm going to say no due to the importance of the project and to get it right. I, I think you want a designer to take that time and do it properly so that the system you have for 20 years works the way you want it to work.
I appreciate that, honestly. That's kind of what I was hoping. The other aspect that I'm just from the perspective, I know the state revolving fund that's out there, is there anything that potentially would jeopardize us that we wouldn't get it based on everything you've heard now? Not counting into the potential of missiles flying over North Korea today, but whatever, there's those kinds of things that are always going to be happening. But I just want to know if, there's no point system or anything that knocks-
I'll, I'll turn it over to these gentlemen, but there will be a hearing on, on the ranking in September. So there's an opportunity for the state to re-prioritize, come back, do something different. But I have never seen a community that got listed at the preliminary stage in August not get their funding. It's my experience.
Okay.
And, and I think that aspect of it's probably something more in there, Bailey Wick. We do need to go through the 45-day referendum process as a legal matter and, you know, we got to see what the electors do with that, but-
Right, right. I know that part, but I was more the other piece of that. If we do all of our homework and get everything done and then all of a sudden something gets shifted because somebody all of a sudden grabs onto a Flint priority or a Detroit priority. And we don't know that at this point. I'm hoping there's nothing else.
To be honest, it's happened in the past. There was a point in time where, where we did have projects that slipped because Detroit had big projects and jumped in a given quarter. I think Lansing at one point did that too. I can't tell you that couldn't happen, but I haven't seen it at all in recent years. You know, if there are other, lots of issues can go wrong. You, you know, we could get to the spring and your construction bids could come back haywire. There were a few years ago, concrete prices went haywire and almost all the SRF projects came in way over budget and that threw a bunch of people off schedule. So certainly there are things that can happen, but-
I mean, and that is the example of the hurricane now in Houston, in which is going to be a major construction impact on Wall Street. So we don't even know what those could be coming down, six months down the road. So, okay, that's all for my questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Giribar. Councilwoman Mitchell?
I don't have a lot of questions. I really dislike reality. And I would just like to wave a magic wand and help my neighbors that have been dealing with this far, far, far too long. Mr. Rubel, can I double check with you? You were talking about the SRF possibility of being awarded and it's rare that we're listed in August and it's not awarded. So we are listed? Is that right? That's our status?
Yes. You're right in the middle of the pack of communities.
Okay.
There was maybe 15 you were-
When does the final list come?
It's, end of September, maybe first of October.
You know, I think our recommendation is the SRF. Obviously that's up to you. If at the end of September, you didn't make the SRF list, it's not too late to change course and we wouldn't lose any time to go to an open market scenario at that point. So I don't really see any risk to the city in seeing what the SRF has to say.
Okay. That was my big question, is that I didn't want like a six-month delay. But what I'm hearing from you is that would not happen. We would know in November if we needed to make a different turn in our decision tree.
Right. I, I would like to see the city adopt this 45-day referendum resolution as soon as possible at a meeting in September and get that published in the paper to start the 45-day, there's a 45-day clock that starts to tick then. I think, you know, so that's going to cost a few hundred dollars to do that publication in the paper. If you had to switch in October to open markets, we'd need to do a different notice and redo that. But that's legally, and I think financing wise, that's it. Not a material change.
And I, I would be in favor if, if this body decides that the SRF is the way to go. I heard a couple of ideas of ways to expedite submitting design components early for permitting. Something else that I can't remember right now. But I'd really like to see that those steps are, are taken. Balancing, that I appreciate. We need to make good decisions and have a good solution. And our design process must be robust. I appreciate that, so I'll pass.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Well, at this time I am looking for consensus and I'll give you my two cents and then I'll turn it over to, to Councilwoman Tahar. I am in favor of moving forward with application for the SRF loan. And as our bond counsel just articulated, we could take some initial action in the very near future. I suspect we would be able to take action and vote on a motion at our next meeting on September 11th. Do you see any reason why that couldn't be accomplished?
I, no, I think that's, what we just need to know for that resolution is the maximum dollar amount you want to have for a ceiling on the bond issue. And at this point in the process, I just always encourage clients-
be? Also noting some other internal improvements that were, were added to the, the list of work.
I think ideally, I'd like to see you do something around the $4 million level for the notice. And, and just for, just for council's information, this is, this is setting a ceiling, it's not requiring you to borrow that much. The ultimate decision will depend on the bids that come in and on your future decisions, so you're just opening the door, and so as long as that, you know, $4 million wouldn't cause some kind of political concern, I think it's good that at least probably go that way.
Yeah. I mean, and that gives you about a half a million dollar cushion.
Well, you know, we, we could belabor the point. No one wants to spend the money, but we need to resolve the issue.
Right, and, and hopefully, it'll come in, you know, if it comes in, another, we certainly wouldn't spend that, but we just don't want you to have construction overruns and get bumped a quarter waiting for new authority.
Okay. I'm, I'm comfortable then going with your recommendation of $4 million, making application with the SRF loan and taking initial action in our next meeting on September 11th, and I will concur with our consultants from Webster Environmental and from Tetra Tech, as well as our own city staff, and to proceed with option number six. I would state, and this term has been tossed about liberally this evening for good reason, moving expeditiously and expediting things. I think one of the best things that we could do, and I think you were the one who touched on this, Roger, is once the design engineering is complete and we're in the position to award bids and to, to initiate work, I think the risk is pretty nominal. I would proceed with doing that even if we don't have the SRF dollars. But we don't need to come to a consensus on that tonight, but that, that would be one way to, to move forward on, on these improvements in a, I think, a thoughtful and strategic way. Mr. Tahar?
Yes, so I concur. I believe we should take the recommendations that have been presented to us first for the alternative number six for the construction, and also to pursue the SRF process. My doubts of, I, I mean, there are some concerns about that, but Mr. Swett's comment that if the SRF process for some reason doesn't work, we, we don't lose time, we would still be able to go out to the open market, so that, I, I believe it's worth the, the possibility of, of the cost savings and the increased flexibility in receiving and spending the money really speak well for the SRF. And I would just like to say, also, I think all along the way, I agree, we need to move as expeditiously as possible. However, I would not want us to short-change the design process, because we want a design that is going to solve the problem, not one we've taken shortcuts to move through quickly and might have a little flaw. So I think we need to take, I don't, not that I want it to be slow, but I think we need to give the design process the time it needs for the best product.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Seale?
I concur with option number six. I think that sounds like the most sensible way to proceed. I also would like to see us at September 11th, consider the resolution to give the 45-day notice for the referendum period for up to $4 million. I think that the SRF is the way to go. I agree with the mayor that I would be willing to try to truncate the process, certainly not in the design phase, but at the awarding of the contract phase, taking the risk, and I guess I would ask Mr. Campell if we were delayed by a month or two, do we have sufficient money to carry payments to vendors in the interim till a, a bond finally came through? If the bond market got held up, or the SRF got held up?
(inaudible).
Pardon me?
(inaudible).
Seriously?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you may recall, phase, phase one of the improvements we paid for in cash, because as opposed to taking out debt, and in this phase two, we issued debt, and we're currently in the process of, of work, working those, those funds, those excess funds back up. So, yeah, we, you know, that might be something to Mr. Gearbox say, I mean, maybe that's what we do, just because, yeah, I, it would be difficult, depending on the, the length and, of course, the, the breadth of whatever outstanding payments we had.
Right.
The money would go quick.
I don't want to be foolhardy, but the option of saving about 12% of the money overall is certainly appealing to me in somewhere, trying to find that time that we could save by awarding the contract early.
And, and I think, you know, one nice aspect of the SRF bond issue is, if you, if you awarded the contract in April, you know, best-case scenario, you're probably not going to have any invoices coming in for four to six weeks after that, which gets you pretty close to that SRF closing date, anyway. The risk that you're really taking is that there's some bigger problem that bumps you out of June into September, and to Mrs. Tahar's point, there's time, if we don't get on the project list in September, we can change different course. That I'm very comfortable with. There are always administrative risks that could bump you a quarter or cause other problems, and I can't guarantee that. But that's, that's what, that's where it would be a little more uncomfortable to float this, if you've got big bills coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. I'm very appreciative of all of our experts and all the information we've got tonight, and I'm in agreement that we definitely need to move forward with your recommendations. I do have two things I want to ask about, which is, we keep talking about this timeframe from the top down, is there a possibility to shave it from the bottom up, meaning this construction of 12 months? I mean, is that realistic? And when are people going to see a result? Is it going to be on the last day of the last month? I mean, is it going to be four months into construction?
No, it will not be. It will be towards the end of that construction, because all of the things have to be in place, systems have to come there. When the systems are started up, that's, that's kind of the last, the last part, so I, I'll, I'll be the bearer of that bad news. It's towards the end. The 12 months, though, I, we've just had two projects finishing up right now that are similar to size of what this one is, and they both were 12-month projects. I think, I see some areas where that might go a little quicker, but I wouldn't be comfortable saying anything until after we've completed our design and talked to local contractors and asked their opinion about what they, can they do it any quicker than 12 months? Because it doesn't do us any good to pin them in at 10 months, and they really can't do it, and then we all sit around fighting about liquidated damages, and we don't want to be in that situation.
Okay, thank you. And then my last one is, I appreciate how much time and effort we've put into this discussion tonight, but yet, everyone that's in this room that's going back home to one of these neighborhoods is still, for the next two years, going to smell sewage. I, I really think that we have got to put a priority on some sort of interim fix, and I'm not sure what we can do, but there has to be something we can do. It's not fair to the residents of this town, and it's not even just now, the people that live in close proximity. You know, you cannot sit in a downtown outside restaurant without smelling it, and it's really an issue. And so I want to, I don't want to lose sight of the short-term fix that needs to be done, too, and what we can do about that. Thank you.
Ms. McCallum?
Yeah, I, I concur that I, I think the SRF is the way to go. I'm wondering about the September 11th meeting, is there a way to do it soon? Does it make a difference to do it sooner than September 11th or not? Okay. Just speed it up wherever we can get it. And I, again, I just concur with everyone, so, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Gearbox?
Yeah, I concur with all the group about the SRF form, because of the $400,000. But the other idea, too, although we're borrowing $4 million, we need to recognize that the change in this system potentially will lead to about $1.4 million in reduction in current operating costs over the whole 20-year period. So fortunately with that, that helps to offset the cost of this, and basically, is putting it back to what we did 20 years ago when we first put this system in place. So the fact that we're replacing it at the cost at which we're doing it, with the improvements and the efficiencies and so forth, are consistent with what we had anticipated. So it sounds like a big dollar amount, but when you put it all together, it's, it's a good solution, and hopefully, a permanent solution. One question, though, is there any phasing that can happen in this construction? Would we do one versus the other, because there are two completely separate systems, or not? Or is it going to all happen simultaneously?
That, it, it may be able to be done in a phased approach, and, so I guess I'll just leave it at that. That's, that is certainly a possibility, and we just have to flesh out how to approach all of this during design.
And that's what I figured. I just wasn't sure whether that could happen, because, or if that potentially adds a lot more of the cost, then it would make sense to do that, but.
Right.
Just wondering. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbox. Councilwoman Mitchell?
I don't have anything to add. I concur with my colleagues.
Very good. Gentlemen, do you have anything you'd like to add before we conclude this evening?
I think we have our marching orders.
Yes, I think you have consensus, you feel clear on, on the consensus of the group, which is actually unanimous. I would state two things in closing. One, again, gentlemen, we appreciate the time, it's a very thorough, thoughtful presentation, but also clear and succinct and accessible to somebody like me who's a novice on these types of issues. Additionally, and the, the point was made on numerous occasions this evening, we still need to, to seek short-term solutions to mitigate and control noxious odors. Mr. Skull will continue to update us weekly at council meetings. Bob, I would ask specifically that you give an update on the dual-border scrubbers the next time we meet on September 11th, because I happen to believe, again, based on the data that's been presented to me thus far, when it's offline, it has an impact, and it's a positive impact on the adjacent property owners. With that, is there anything the group would like to add? I would remind those in the audience and my council colleagues that tomorrow evening at 7:30, we do have a public forum here in council chambers to discuss what qualities and attributes we're looking for in our next police chief. I encourage you to help us promote that via social media, via the, why can't I think of the name? Facebook, that, yeah. Put it on Facebook, help us, help us get the word out, because we're genuinely interested in our citizens' thoughts and opinions on this, on filling this, this critically important position in city government. If there's nothing further, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn then at 9:24 PM.
Sold.
Moved by Mayor Protam Tahar, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you for a good meeting, appreciate it.